Accordingly, the half hour that we have, so everybody's gonna get about five or six minutes and and then we'll keep it going and make sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak tonight. So Stephanie, we can start with you. Why don't you come on up? We've got the a quorum here, so it's 5:45 and I'll call this listening session of the Bloomington City Council to order. Good evening and welcome. If you could sign in after you're done, but if you could state your name and...
Sure, I'd like to go by Stephanie if that's okay. Yeah, I'd like to go by Stephanie.
Okay. All right, fire away Stephanie.
All right, so at last week's listening session, it was brought to your attention the domestic abuse charges and civil lawsuit concerns of City Council District Four candidate Isaac Rubel. So I was kind of called out a little bit as to why am I not investigating anybody else? And really, it's not my job to do that. The only reason I gravitated on this one is because when I was... My, basically, domestic abuse is very close to my heart because I have friends and family who have been victims of domestic abuse, including my mother, who died at the hands of her abuser, okay? So that's the reason. It's not racist, as I felt you were trying to come at me why I didn't do anybody... yeah.
I just asked if you were investigating any other candidates.
Right, but I mean, I felt a little off guard on that.
About you being racist.
Okay, that's the way I felt. Okay. So the information shared on social media did not, I did not accuse or say Isaac was convicted of any crime or civil matter, not once. The post says he alleged to have done what was in the civil suit and said, basically, I said, "Charges were filed against him for the domestic abuse." And these basically are facts and that's what was presented. Right after the listening session, Lona reported the Facebook post. I'm a little concerned on that, that Lona would do that as a current acting council member who tried to remove information that a citizen put out there regarding a questionable candidate, a candidate that she endorses. But what concerns me, I, yeah. So what concerns me more is that Councilmember Nelson was asked if the session was recorded at the end. I asked him. He said, "No, it's not being recorded. The audio is turned off." Well, I found out the next day...
That was the part after the meeting when you and I...
Yep, after the meeting, I asked you if it was recorded and you said, "No, it's not recorded. That the audio is turned off."
I took that to mean our conversation when I came up to you at the back and said...
No, I was new to this whole thing and I had asked if this...
Well, I apologize if I misunderstood.
You should have the recording from last...
So it doesn't matter. I'd like to finish my talk here, I guess, so. So anyways, if I would have known it was recorded, then I probably would have asked to remove my personal information because I'm not sure how this works and you're aware of that. But in my career, I've received death threats, been harassed and stalked. Exposing personal information is causing me great harm. I'm not a public, in the public office, so I should have a right to privacy. However, on Friday, October 13th, a news reporter shared a screenshot of a post that was made by an Abdi Hanad. It was made in a Facebook group, a Facebook group that you are all in, along with your friend and admin Curtis Griesel. I'm not able to see the group because I've been blocked by Curtis. Abdi also blocked my profile before I could see it. The post was made with malicious intent. Abdi posted that I'm a quote-unquote convicted felon. I can guarantee 100%, I'm not a convicted felon because I am licensed, bonded, and insured for my employment. It appears, Abdi, and I say appears, Abdi is a friend, an acquaintance of Isaac. They both lived in Rochester. They both went to RCTC. And they both went to the University of Cape Town in South Africa. They are also part of the Somali community, which you know is a very tight-knit community. But I'd like to also add, to add, that Abdi has been advocating for Isaac all over social media. He's been promoting and sharing Isaac's statement regarding the documentation I presented to the community. And again, as a result of having my contact information released after the council meeting again, apparently now malicious attacks have basically been brought against me. So this right here, to me, is not acceptable. When I was made aware of the malicious post, I reacted out of fear for my safety, for defamation of my character. I called my attorney. I went to the Bloomington Police Department. I filed a harassment report. That was on Friday night. I told them the whole background story, provided a screenshot of the post. They said, "Reach back out to them if I get continued slandering, threats of violence, or contact by anyone as a result of this," and they suggested that I go get a restraining order against Mr. Abdi. Saturday night, there was this Escalade suburban truck parked at the end of my private road, which is only shared by me and my neighbor. I was a little freaked out, but I didn't go out there. It was dark. Eventually, they left, so I'm like, "I'll go back to sleep." Well, I woke up the next day and I thought, with all this stuff going on, malicious attacks, I thought, "Well, what if it was the Subd guy? I don't know. What if it was Isaac? I have no clue." But these thoughts ran in my head because the employer in Isaac's civil suit made a statement that Isaac told her, "If you don't drop the suit, I'll make you disappear."
Stephanie?
So during...
Be here, but we're at five minutes here.
Okay, yep.
Trying to get everybody in.
Okay, well...
Oh, and I would like to say, I mean, as I said last week, this is...
We're at five minutes because I think you guys cut me off for like a minute. If you can just give me another minute, I'd...
I am, I'm timing it.
Wrap it up.
On my phone, you're at 5 minutes, 17 seconds, .50 right now. So I'd like to stress, as I did last week, this is not official city business.
Yep.
This is a campaign business and I think we've made statements regarding it...
I'm just gonna say, because it is a listening session, you endorse this candidate as an acting council members, not candidates, not as candidates. Isaac Rubel also as, on his social media, "Mayor Tim Bussey, City Council endorses me." So don't sit here and blow up, smoke up me saying that you don't endorse him as a city council. You're endorsing him as a city council.
I'm endorsing him as a candidate.
My main question that I wanted to ask you guys is, are you no longer endorsing him?
That's, that's...
Two of you.
Has he been convicted of a crime?
Has he, he has...
Has he been convicted of a crime?
They're pretty strong allegations regardless.
Of a crime?
They're pretty strong allegations. That's all I can say.
You want us to say something? You want us to make statements about not supporting him based on your own judgment of him? Not anybody else's?
It's not my judgment. It's, it's the paperwork that's there.
All right, I'm, I'm in...
Convicted of crimes.
Okay. I'm sure you have copies of the police report that were in there.
So, and I will, and I will say it again, I, whether or not we endorse him, that's part of our campaigns, all of the campaigns. It's not official city business.
I didn't get finished with that.
It's not appropriate for us to be addressing that here, so, thank you.
Mayor, if I might, just add one thing.
Very quickly.
I believe the council did endorse him and I don't believe all council members have endorsed him either, just for clarity on that.
That's fair. All right. Jonathan? Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jonathan Minks. The reason for me coming tonight is I recall at our League of Women Voters in our meeting that you, Mayor Tim Bussey, said, "The good thing about a listening session is it's less evasive and people can feel more comfortable when they are here, okay?" You want it to be inviting and less pressure and for residents to actually come and speak. Based on last week's session, in my personal opinion, I would have to disagree. When Stephanie spoke, I felt that she was not embraced and not given grace on her topic that she brought awareness to all of you. I applaud her. I applaud her for standing up and addressing the council and mayor. This can be very intimidating. She should be welcomed and not feel like she is being cross-examined. This is a listening session. If that's what it is, it's a listening session. If you want residents to come speak, you need to make them feel welcome and empowered to speak, unless you don't want them to. What I heard was a mayor questioning a resident on why and how they did their research. That didn't sound friendly to me. You were questioning her rights as a citizen to do her due diligence to research a candidate running for office. You questioned her on how she got this information as well. This is all public information and there is nothing funny or deceptive about that. Now, the other problem with not having an open forum and having this be recorded is I can just listen and I have to assume who's talking. So my next one, I think it was Jenna, said, "I can only assume that Jenna questioned her on, 'Did you do any more research on other candidates?'" I can only assume that because it's not videotaped and you would have to guess who is speaking, which makes it hard to track who is speaking. In my opinion, it doesn't matter if she researched any other candidates or not. That is not, you're cross-examining her. That's not making her feel welcome. It's not making her feel safe in this environment. I felt this line of question was combative from the council to the resident. She was bringing a concern to light in forefront, which a lot of you appeared to be in the dark about. Yet another council member said, "I don't feel comfortable talking about this." Ladies and gentlemen, there will always be topics that are going to be uncomfortable, okay? You are our elected officials, okay? This comes down to accountability, ownership for each and every one of you for your actions and decisions as our officials. When speaking to your constituents, you should make them feel welcome and appreciated. I would ask that you please give some grace and don't take it personally if they question you on your actions and decisions or lack of. If you want people to show up and talk, please don't be combative and be open to criticism and feedback. And that's, that's what I wanted to come and just say my piece on.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Jonathan. I will say a couple of things. First of all, whether or not Stephanie felt unwelcome, I mean, I think that's up to her and I think we see she returned this week, so she felt welcome enough to return this week. In terms of this being a listening session, yes, it is. And we have made it clear that these listening sessions are not just a one-way speech, that there will be questions back and forth. And I'm, yeah, sometimes it might feel like a cross-examination, but we're looking for more information. We're looking for more details about the information that has been presented to us, which is why we wanted to do it this way as opposed to the, the, the public comment forum, which was just a, you know, a one-way speech and we couldn't get together information. And so I think what Jenna was doing was asking, "Have you done this background check on anybody else?" And so it was a question. I mean, it's, it's part of the listening session and I think it is part of what makes this a useful tool. Because questions of clarification, questions of just getting more details about something, it's, it's the way we've got this set up and it's what we're trying to do with it, so.
I just wanted to also clarify, the reason I asked her is because she said that she was an investigator. And so I said, "Are you investigating other candidates?" Because to me, it seems suspicious that all of us, I mean, like, why would she pick the one, that one candidate and not others?
She explained that and I feel that's totally irrelevant. She, as a resident, she can make her own choices.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just clarifying why I asked the question because she said that she was an investigator.
It sounded combative.
Patrick, very quickly, because we gotta wrap up here. We got others to get to.
Briefly, I want to say I appreciate your comments about the community feeling welcome to show up to a space like this and share their feedback. But personally, and I understand we've only got about another two months of coming to these meetings, I, I don't think we need to give grace to folks that show up in the final weeks before an election to throw a bunch of slanderous accusations out, knowing that the community is gonna be going off of Facebook posts that they might have seen briefly, folks who say they were unfairly maligned handing out and complaining about a post that unfairly maligned them on Facebook as they turn around and do the exact same thing. I think we need to have more courage in this country to stand up to folks, to not make them comfortable, to not make them feel safe, when they're frankly being really hurtful and vindictive towards their neighbors, when they're pushing lies that have been disproven on statements that they've all read, have already been shared on the same forums. I welcome folks and I appreciate their feedback across the community when they come here to share it, but this isn't feedback. This is a muddy political hit and it's a waste of this community's time.
It's, it's, it's not.
It's certainly not.
Seagull documents.
My fate, Minks, when you have...
I, can I, let me respond. I have a right to respond to the councilman. So he made a statement, so he's saying people are muddying up the waters. This is all public information that any private citizen can look up. It's not slanderous if it's public information and it's documented in courts, police reports, all that stuff. That stuff is public. It's not malicious. It's not slanderous. It's bringing awareness to the community. So I respectfully disagree, but I, I don't, I don't think, I, I think people need to have some grace here and I'll always stand on that side.
Look, we can have, we can definitely have some grace, but I will say that the, the contract that we make with you as a constituent, when you come to the city council, is that you will follow the parameters we put down and that is official council business. This is not official council business. Mr. Mayor said that to Stephanie last week, that this is not in, this is not relevant for this forum. And, and, and Isaac has been running for a long time, right? He's been out there as a candidate and it's only now that this is coming to light. And so, like, I, I guess I'm of the opinion that, why shouldn't we think that there's a reason for this? And why should we continue to have a conversation about a topic where we said it's a violation of the contract that we have with you and us when you come here to talk about official city business? I mean, that would be like no different, in my opinion, than the people that called in on the line last week to, to, to have public comments about one of our, our items on the agenda and decided to throw anti-Semitic stuff at us in a public forum instead. Those, not because of the language of it, but because it wasn't relevant to the topic. So that's all I'm, that's where I'm at on it. It's not, it's not like a combative thing. It's like, we have to agree that this forum is for official city business or else anybody can just run in here and like yell at us for no good reason about anything. And I don't think, if you were on this side of the table, you'd like that any more than we would. So if we could have that contract, agree to that, that would be awesome. Then I think we could get...
I appreciate that. Thank you. We're gonna move on if we can. We're trending well behind already. Mr. Clark?
I'll keep this short, David Clark. This does involve city business and it's about the Facebook comments that we've been, now over six months, Facebook comments have been shut off in the city of Bloomington. So I did not get the response that you made to Terry McEnroy. Denise did send that to me. I don't know if I was copied or ended up in spam or whatnot. And that seemed to answer some of his questions. But at the end of the day, Facebook comments are still shut off in the city of Bloomington. And during an election, I wrote you guys two months ago and I said, "If this continues into the election season, it's gonna become election interference." Well, guess what it is? This city, you all are engaging in election interference right now because you're not allowing people the chance to give feedback, good or bad, on the city Facebook page. So I went to the other Facebook pages around that surround us, Edina, Burnsville, Eagan, Eden Prairie, Minneapolis, and Richfield. Every single one of them has comments enabled and we don't. The question is, will they be enabled today, tomorrow, in this election season? That's what I want to know. It's, to me, it's tantamount to an in-kind contribution to each one of your campaigns because you are blocking people and giving yourself an unfair advantage to be, for people to speak their minds. And none of the other cities are doing it, so why are you doing it? That's my question. So number one, when will Facebook comments be restored? Number two, are Facebook, are comments shut off on Nextdoor, Twitter, the other platforms except for YouTube, which have always been shut off? So I'd ask you that, Mr. Manager.
Do you like me too? Please. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the answer was in the email. That's no different than what was in the email, David. That's the answer.
I want to hear you say it now. Comments gonna be turned on or not?
There is, that we said, back when the information was presented to the council, that we were going to maintain that status at least through the end of the year. So we had an adequate period of time to evaluate. And the fact is that the way the city utilizes Facebook and the way that we utilize Twitter and the way that we utilize other social, such as Let's Talk Bloomington, all have a different way of being utilized. And so the, the way that we have comments is based on what those different platforms.
Okay. Well, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, that's election interference.
Well, and if I, if I may, one more time, please.
I just want to reiterate one more time, because we've said this before and it is the truth, to an allegation of election interference. The city is under no obligation to create a public forum in a comment section, period. So if we have comments enabled, we are not able to moderate them or to amend them or delete them unless they are violating our policy or demonstrably so irrelevant to the topic that we feel that it's okay to remove them. But we're not allowed to edit what's there. We're not obligated to create the forum in the first place.
Well, it certainly looks bad for the city, especially when the surrounding cities have comments enabled. They're not afraid of what the residents are telling them. So you leave me no choice but then tomorrow to file a complaint against you, Mr. Verbrugge, with the Office of Administrative Hearing in St. Paul, saying that there's election interference going on in Bloomington and that you all are getting in-kind contributions from the city to your campaigns. It's illegal.
It's been turned off on, on the week of filing, perhaps. This was turned off well in advance.
Exactly. You've been warned. You've been warned to get them back on. You've been asked to get it back.
I have as well. I have a public city council page that comments are turned on and you guys can tell me whatever you want.
Then where?
I also have a public campaign page where comments are turned on and you can say anything you want to, to me, and I can't turn that off. That's my obligation to you. So to decide, because Mr. Verbrugge on city policy is benefiting me, I'm not quite sure how that's possible when on Facebook, both as a city council member and as a candidate, I have an open public forum. So please help me understand how I am interfering with the, an election. But I am completely transparent and you have not yet. I don't have anyone else that I can see here made a single comment one way or the other on either of my...
Because, because the city manager works for you. You have one employee and that's the city manager. You can direct him to turn on the Facebook comments and you haven't done that. Even though repeatedly, people have come here and said, "I need to turn this back on. It looks bad."
Actually, I think it's gonna be the second person, so it's not repeatedly.
Well, there's numerous people that have come here and brought it to your attention. It's, this has been going on for a long time. And I'm saying that at this point, if you don't turn on the, the, the Facebook comments and allow people to speak their mind, it's interfering with this election and it's giving you an unfair advantage.
I don't believe that to be true. There are plenty of other opportunities.
I'm telling you what my standpoint is and what a lot of...
Also your standpoint that this was a First Amendment issue.
It is.
It is not because we've turned them off for everyone. If we just turned them off for you and your friends, that would be a First Amendment issue. The fact that we've turned them off for everyone means that we've simply made a city policy that we're not going to even have comments on our Facebook page.
Right, well, I'm just, I'm just telling you what, what it looks like from the community and it looks bad because none of these other cities have turned off their Facebook comments, okay? So that's...
Thank you for that.
It's not like other cities. This is Bloomington.
Yeah, exactly. We lack transparency. That's right. We are not like...
Frankly, we're doing you a favor by not turning on comments.
Okay.
There are so many other things I could...
Okay. Thank you, thank you, councilmember. Thank you, David. Sally?
Before I say what I had planned to come in, I want to support Stephanie and her comments about treatment on Facebook. And my last experience was from your comments saying, "For God's sakes, he was taking pictures and putting them on anti-Islamic websites," and he wasn't. And so a community was writing negatively about me and the attorney that I had picked and it was based on false information. Nobody was convicted. There was no, it, it didn't happen. And it's very frustrating that you guys haven't said, well, no, you did, Donna. You, at the last one, said...
You did.
You clarified they weren't put on...
Two times now.
Yeah, and you clarified they weren't put online. The minutes haven't been changed. Mayor, you haven't apologized for the statement. I believe you had made a comment at some time about, and in fact, one time I came and you, anyway, anyway.
I will listen to whatever I said.
Anyway, my experience is what she is talking about happening online, it's awful. And the stuff they wrote about me and my attorney, completely inaccurate. He did not put pictures online, ever, and, you know, just no apology. I mean, she did say it. They weren't online. She hasn't seen them. You said you saw them. You couldn't have. They're not online. Anyway, now I'll read what I had intended to say. Last week, you said, "The mayor said, 'Wait for what the courts say,'" in reference to, that was the mayor's response when informed about concerns with candidate. That kind of response is what I expected concerning the overhand loop knot found in a fireman's gear locker, a locker that does not have a door. Innocent until proven guilty, was not afforded the fireman. Instead, it was concluded there was racism regardless that it was not even determined there was a crime. So listening, talking to the, the conversation with Stephanie and, you know, was he convicted? You know, did any of that happen? None of that happened and none of that happened with the rope either. And yet, it was out to the community as racism is in our fire department. We are gonna handle it. We are gonna figure this out. And I'm asking you to figure out that this doesn't happen again, that a statement that is not accurate, it's, it, it didn't go through the courts. It wasn't even determined to be a crime, that our city doesn't jump to making statements like that. It was, I felt it was harmful. I felt bad for our firemen. Again, I've had things said about me that are not accurate and coming out of it, it's very difficult. I can feel it talking to here. I can feel it when I'm in this room. They, you know, I heard, I remember at one point you said something like, "You don't know what we hear from the community?" And it's like, "Yeah, and it probably isn't accurate and I can't do anything about it." But I'm asking the city to do something about it, you know, stop this stuff, you know, be accurate. It's what I had said for, you know, the, like, year that I was talking, the inaccuracies. They're, it's harmful. That's it.
I, I will say, Sally, I will never stop supporting Bloomington employees. And that's what we did. We had an employee come forward with a concern and that employee was supported. And I will do that always. Now...
Expensive the other employees and that, you didn't need to take a situ, you didn't make, you didn't make to pick one over the other. Support him. I'm not...
Sally, I didn't, I didn't make it up. I was repeating what we had heard from an employee. And I will support employees at all times in the city of...
Without there being a determination that there was a crime, saying that there was racism. And support the employee. I have no problem with that. But you don't go and say that, I mean, just like you're saying with the candidate. There's all this information out there, you know, what was it determined to be? You know, it's like you can still support the person without saying the fire department was racist.
I don't recall saying the fire department was racist, Sally. And if I've seen, if you have a quote of me saying that, I'd appreciate seeing that.
I don't know of you specifically, but coming out of the city, the statements coming out of the city, I will email it to you and I will hopefully get a response from this email. I'll show you what the city said, what was quoted in the paper and how our city looked like we had a racism problem due to an overhand loop not being found in an open locker. Okay?
Thank you, Sally. Mr. Johnson, we've got about two minutes for you.
Cool. Good evening to you all. I'm gonna switch topics. In my neighborhood, there is a property that has, at some point in time, put up a large fence. The fence is legal. And then they took Class 5 and covered the entire backyard in Class 5 so that they can park vehicles there. They also have a lot parked on the street. There's been a vehicle parked in front of this house that hasn't moved for three months. Okay? I brought this up over a month ago to the environmental department who handles this stuff. I don't know why that's environmental and not city maintenance and engineering, but that's the way you guys got it set up. So I brought it up there and they filled out something and the girl was new, which I learned after, because I was down there last week, at the end of the week. And I asked, "Hey, what's going on?" Because I filed a, a notice about this property. And the gentleman came up and... Tanya, Taka, Roni, who said, "Well, that's my area. That's what I do. I'm the inspector and I'm aware of that property." And I said, "Well, I brought something up a month ago." And he said, "Well, no, it's been going on for longer than that, but I can't tell you anything about it because it's an open issue. We're working on it." And I said, "Okay, well, you know, when might I expect to see something going on with it?" Well, it's been going on for a while. And then he tells me that the situation has been going on for over a year. And then he made the, he gave me his comment. I was gonna use a different word. That, you know, "We've, we've been dealing with the, with the homeowner, but it's gonna be an expensive fix. So, you know, we're trying to work with them, but there's nothing the city can..." So, you know, we're trying to work with them, but there's nothing the city can do. Really? Why have ordinances if you don't enforce them? If that has been a case, it's 8949 Bloomington Avenue. And, uh, Taka Roni, who said, he's the one, uh, knows about it. When do you start enforcing your, your, uh, policies? Uh, and if I just say, if I'm in violation, but I say, you know, it's going to cost me a lot of money to fix it, do I just get to delay it? I'd like to see, how do I follow up and find out what the city wants to do on it? So I know it didn't just go off into the air like it appears to have.
Here's, here's the deal, Mr. Johnson, we gotta wrap up here because we got.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's not uncommon for if a neighbor makes a complaint, you don't get updated as to what happens because that's between the city and the complainant, the person who, who's had the violation. More often than not, I know our city staff tries to work to a resolution.
Uh huh.
Don't want to just go in and write tickets, don't want to just go in and, and, you know, be the heavy-handed.
I know, I've experienced that.
Trying to work toward a resolution and do what we can. And, uh, sometimes.
Find a year, a reasonable amount of time.
And sometimes it takes time and I, and I don't know any of the details on this.
It could be next millennium.
Then at least you won't be around to see it, right? So that'll be fine.
Yeah, you're funny.
I will have.
I think, I think that.
Follow up.
Or a little bit more than.
I will have.
It's over here and we can't do anything about it.
I will have staff follow up with you and get, get you an answer and provide as much detail as they're able to, understanding of course, your inform, the information that you get is not necessarily public information. It's between the city and the claimant, the folks at 8949, I don't have my glasses on here, whatever I wrote.
Eighty-nine forty-nine Bloomington.
Happening. So we'll, we'll let you know.
I think if you're gonna have policies about what has to be, you know, you have to have a driveway of this, you have to have that. You got all these statutes and things.
Details.
And if you can go for a year, that says the message that, well, it isn't really what the city wants to care about. There's a whole lot of other places that are similar and I'm going to give you guys the addresses of all of them. But for it to be over a year, that's not.
Thank you, Major.
Our business. Thank you for your time.
I have to, uh, pick you up next week, I'm sorry. Um, we just, we're out of time, so I'll have to pick it up next week. We'll have you first on the list next week, okay? Or next time. I didn't, I don't think we meet next week, so. Stop. All right. Council, we're three minutes over, so we look for a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I just want to be sure, because this was the question that I asked about last week. So I want to be sure that we have a response, uh, in the public, uh, public, uh, forum at the end of the meeting, uh, for the gentleman. It's here. So it's okay to.
Question about the group homes?
Yeah.
Yeah. There, there isn't new information on the group home. We're still trying to compile the information.
Are you following up? And his question is, have we, have we followed up?
I don't have the, I don't have all the information.
So we can talk about that.
Okay. All right.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, anyone?
The motion.
And we've got a second, all in favor?
I.
You are adjourned, we'll see you downstairs. Thank you.